Item number 19, authorizing the city attorney to negotiate a letter of representation with a law firm for services related to cruise ship ports, referendum, ordinances, or issues. Authorizing the city manager to execute the letter of representation upon consent of the city attorney.
Can Commissioner Kaufman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that hiring an attorney is a significant process. It's something I do almost every day in my work, although I'm usually the one hired. So I understand this process, and I understand that the more complex, and we have two attorneys up here, so I'm pretty sure Commissioner Dabell is going to agree with me to some extent. But anyway, the more complex the matter, the more complex the process of hiring an attorney. And so I understand why this has been somewhat of a struggle to identify an attorney, and especially with the controversies surrounding it and the issues. There's a lot of complicated issues substantively in the law. And so after the Radley firm withdrew their name, I think that was three weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, my intention was to approach Mr. Joe Jacko. And I did. And I spoke with him, and I'm satisfied he can represent the city. I'm satisfied that he can represent the city and potentially defend an ordinance. And that's what he said he would be committed to, and that his firm would be committed to. I think it would be very difficult to find another firm. I waited, and I did not bring this motion at the last city commission meeting on September 1, because one of our colleagues, I think, had an excellent idea of reaching out to Sam Goran, an attorney I'm very familiar with. He's represented the South Florida Regional Planning Council for decades. He's represented the city of North Lauderdale for decades. I think Pembroke Pines, I think other municipalities and other government agencies. And he is the top lawyer, and I don't know why I didn't think of it. I should have actually thought of it. But I really appreciated that thought. So I held back, and I wanted to see how that would play out. It turns out that their law firm also has a conflict. I mean, it's the nature of, sometimes, of our business. I turn down cases all the time because of conflict. Once a person calls my office, we do a conflict check, and that's what we have to do as attorneys, to be ethical in the practice. So anyway, I think it makes sense, and my recommendation, and it was at the last time that we met, was to direct the city attorney to negotiate with Mr. Jacko, to represent us for the purpose of drafting the ordinance to be consistent with the three referenda that were approved in November of 2020, and then be prepared to defend if necessary in a legal action. So that's my motion. And I appreciate if there are differences of opinion. This doesn't mean that we have to agree with everything that Mr. Jacko says, and doesn't mean that we shouldn't challenge what he says, because we should. That's to make sure that we have a strong ordinance, right? And defendable ordinance. But I think at this juncture, the will of the people is important. We've all said that. And there's some frustration that's been growing, and I think we have to, we need to act. And I don't know reasonably that we can expect in a short time period that we would find another law firm anyway. So here we have a gentleman and a law firm that wants to do it. They're eager to do it. They seem capable to do it. So why not allow our city attorney and give him the opportunity to negotiate a contract? So that's the motion.
Okay. Madam Mayor, we do have speakers on this.
All right, okay.
We'll hear the speakers, and then we'll continue our debate.
Okay, Arlo Haskell. And please use the side monitors, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor.
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
Yes, how's that? Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Arlo Haskell, 716 Love Lane. I'm also treasurer of the Committee for Safer Cleaner Ships. Quite a turn of events. I'm very glad to see Commissioner Kaufman sponsor this item and make the motion to direct the city attorney to hire Mr. Joe Jacko, or to negotiate an agreement with Joe Jacko to serve as outside counsel. I think, you know, this is an issue of great public importance, and fundamentally, I feel that the, you know, Commission should take the responsibility for hiring outside counsel. That, you know, you on the dais have earned the trust of the public. That's why you're sitting up there. I think the public wants to be able to, wants the Commission to be responsible to us in making this decision, wants Joe Jacko to be responsible to the Commission. You know, let's not forget that this began as an issue of basic democracy. This was a voter-organized, voter-driven referendum that passed that we are trying to get back, trying to get the rightful results of that voter-driven process. So I think it's very important that, you know, you all who are accountable to the voters give the direction for this. And as I think is well-known, we support Joe Jacko's, you know, potential services to the city. We think he could do a great job. He knows an awful lot about this issue already, and I think he would be an excellent fit for the job. So I thank Commissioner Kaufman for bringing this forward, and I hope you all will support his motion.
Madam Mayor, Arlo, could I ask you a couple of questions? One, how did you come about Joe Jacko?
We worked with Joe Jacko during the legislative process. He advised us on issues pertaining to the bill as it worked its way through the legislature. It was David Dunn on our team who made the initial contact with him, and then he, you know, agreed to represent us on issues up there. And then subsequently, he has, you know, provided a memo which we've shared to the city, which outlines the city's defenses against any potential claims that would be made by peer B, and outlines the city's defenses against any potential damage.
Did you pay him for his services?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. Now, what about his relationship as the attorney for the governor?
He was-
Does it feel there's a conflict there when the governor signed the bill?
He was general counsel for DeSantis, but he was out of that position by the time the legislative session began. He would be much better fit to answer that question than I would, but he didn't have a conflict representing us in connection with an issue that the governor was about to sign, so presumably there would be no conflict for that same reason. But again, I don't want to put words in his mouth.
Do you know if his firm has represented either the, any cruise lines or bar pilots?
Again, he'd be better fit to answer those questions than I would, not to my knowledge, but I presume the process that Commissioner Kaufman has-
Part of the reason I don't want to move forward on this is because I understand he has not been able to determine whether there's any conflicts or not. And I don't want to put us in a position where we hire someone only to find out later, after we've approved the hire, that he does have a conflict of interest. I think that puts us in a poor light as well.
Well, I would-
By not doing our full due diligence of checking all aspects, that's what we did with the other two attorneys, and we found out there were conflicts. They didn't realize that at the time, but as they researched cases or people their firm had represented, that's when they came across some of these conflicts.
Certainly, yeah, yeah. And that's the process that should be done. I would defer to Commissioner Kaufman, the way he proposed his motion. It sounds like he's directing the city attorney to negotiate a retainer agreement, which presumably would include a conflict check and the normal processes that you would go through. So again, I would defer to the attorney and the commissioner who sponsored this item to clarify that. But I would assume and hope that that would be part of the process.
That's not what the resolution says.
Commissioner Hoover, you have a question for Arlo?
Yes, I'd like to see us do the same sort of process that we've used, excuse me, a couple of times, I think, at least already, where we've sent questions very specific about potential conflicts of interest. Is that something that would be part of this process? Is that something that would be in this particular resolution?
Commissioner, I think we're in the middle of public comment right now, but we'll get back to it. I think we've got a couple more speakers, okay? But we'll double back to that.
We have Edie Hambright and then Margaret Romero.
Hi, Edie Hambright, 924 Emma Street, apartment 103. I just wanted to give a support to trying to have the Commission make the decision. I think as much efforts that the community has gone through between the referendums with the vote, with all the concern, things that have been raised recently as to who might be the legal representative consultant, to have pure transparency so that the committee makes the decision. There's review, there's discussion, however it gets negotiated, to still come back and bring it back to the Commission to make whatever final decision, if that's appropriate in that way, or whatever happens tonight with that, and then the negotiation happens. Cleaner Ships has been really good in their research and their support in how they've organized things. So I really have faith in what the person has been doing, it seems like, on the behalf of the organization, but on the behalf of the citizens of Key West. So if that's the person that, you know, seems like has that expertise especially, we've gotten this far with it, it would seem like he would be a very good possibility as a candidate. So we would support the Commission being the ones to decide that, and if it goes forward with Commissioner Kaufman's sponsorship tonight, that sounds good. Thank you.
Margaret Romero.
Margaret Romero, 1615 Washington Street. It seems to me that one firm has already been not used because they had some association with the bar pilots. This firm and this gentleman has prior association and has been paid by the very people who are suggesting that we use him. And I don't mean you, Commissioner Kaufman, I mean cleaner, safer ships. I took a look at these public comments today that were here, and a number of those letters called for transparency, integrity, and ethics. And that is something that has always been shown by our city attorney. He has made those decisions, and who represents the city when it comes to union negotiations, court cases, and everything else. He's the one that got us through the ductors, and why we now want to say that what is supposed to be a strong city manager form of government, that we want to leave the choosing of an attorney to the elected officials. There's something that's really bothering me even more and more about this, is that people keep calling for transparency, integrity, and ethics. Well, I have seen no financial report of who the contributors were that put together, from what I understand, close to $400,000 to wage this campaign. So if there's to be transparency, let's see who the money is behind all this and why. Why can't we follow the process that we've always used in the city? It ain't broke, so don't go fixing it. It appears that we seem to have a small group of people who are very, very loud with their concerns and what they want. But I ask you to take a look at those whose letters were in the public comment. Do you realize that half, if not more of them, do not have mailing addresses to where their bills, or property taxes, or absentee votes go that are in the city? One of the votes, the letters was even from Anchorage, Alaska, one from Key Largo. Transparency, following the process? It has come to my attention more than once that we have some elected officials who are not following the process when it comes to giving direction to city employees, which, if you look at our charter, elected officials aren't supposed to do that. As an elected official, I always had to go through the city manager if I wanted something done. So if we need transparency, and we need integrity, and we need ethics, Sean Smith has never done anything to impugn any of those. It has worked. He has put the questions together. And why should we, if we couldn't hire this firm that, you know, said they couldn't do because of the bar pilots, why are we going to hire a firm that has already given advice to this group? This has gotten way too emotional.
One more speaker, Will Benson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Will Benson, here on behalf of the Lower Keys Guides Association. Yes, quite the turn of events tonight, but I want to say that in the course of this campaign, we've gotten to know many of you. And Sam, you have talked with us at length at various times during this campaign, brought very hard and very good questions to us. And as a fishing guide, you know, I respect that when we speak the truth. And in the past, you have spoken and said that you intended to uphold the will of the voters. And we have watched, you know, this process, as difficult as it is, it is the right process to go through, and to be very careful about the selection of attorney or counsel, and to draft these ordinances appropriately. And I just want to thank you for taking the initiative tonight and taking the leadership to move forward on implementing what the voters voted on. And that's from the fishing guides that supported this, that care about this deeply. Again, the reason that we're here is there is an environmental issue out there. It affects our fishery, it affects our environment, it affects our community and our way of life. That's why we've been involved, and I think that that's what the voters voted for when they stepped up to the ballot box. So I want to thank you for that, and I want to also ask the Commission to look at this situation, and look at this hiring of counsel, and consider, you know, what we have been through in organizing this and learning about this, and, you know, the selection of our own counsel to do this. I think he's more than qualified, and the reason that we're having any kind of discussion about that is because some of the doubt that was raised early on, that he was somehow biased because he had represented us. We stand here tonight, and we will waive any conflict of interest. Joe Jacko will not work for Safer Cleaner Ships. He will work for the citizens in the city of Key West. And that's what he has told us, and that's what we can stand here tonight and tell you guys. And so with that, I just want to say thank you, Sam, for your leadership on that, and I hope that you guys can find a pathway to move forward, because this has taken a long time, and there are a lot of us who would like to see this move forward. Thank you.
Okay, back to discussion. Commissioner Hoover?
Okay, so we've had a process that we have gone through. It's been a little different with the two different attorney firms so far, but each time our city attorney has interviewed those people to look to see if we had any conflicts of interest. Then they both did their research on that, and in one case, it came back immediately that they did have a conflict of interest, and in a couple of cases, they were not interested in taking on the case. And then this last time, it appears that they did have a conflict of interest, although it sounded like he would have been a very good choice. So if we have a way that we have gone about this so far, which included, you know, actually getting a list of questions from you, Madam Mayor, on behalf of the Commission, I think that we should follow that process. I myself was looking forward to hearing from Mr. Jacko tonight. I think all of us were, and sort of like the man behind the mirror, whatever. But I think that we need to hear from him, and I don't have a problem with Commissioner Kaufman's proposal of taking over the sponsorship of this, but I still think he needs to appear in front of us and answer the questions that I'm sure a lot of us still have.
Thank you, Commissioner Wardlow.
Yeah. The way I'm reading this, it's authorize the city attorney to negotiate a letter of representation with a law firm for service-related cruise ship port referendum. He can negotiate with Joe, well, I can't say his name, but he can negotiate with him, he can negotiate with you, or Greg. I mean, you know, so any attorney that he feels that or wants to represent, maybe we got to go out for RFP, or he goes out for RFP and looks for it. I don't know how it works, but, you know, all the law firms he could go out to, and it's got to come back to us for approval anyway. So I would say, you know, if he could talk to him, and he could talk to any other attorney that's interested in handling this case, and like we've said from the get-go, I mean, this is a very delicate thing, and it's going to take time to figure it out and, you know, move forward on it. So, you know, I say we either postpone this and find out, you know, that he's going to come back and talk to us, or Sean's going to talk to him, or whatever. So that's my piece. I mean, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Madam Mayor, I just made some notes while the conversation was going on earlier about while the comments were being made. And, you know, I agree with Commissioner Wardlow that the resolution says that the city attorney is authorized. That's what the resolution says. And it says that being resolved, that the city commission of the city is as follows, that he is authorized, and then the city manager is authorized to execute. So, you know, I don't know what we're being asked to do, for that matter, why. You know, we've been told that we're the people, that we're the ones that are accountable to the people. We're also the ones that hire these folks to do the jobs and to be the experts in the jobs that they do. So, and they're the ones that inform us on our being able to do the job. So as far as the transparency, this is being played out probably in a bigger and more transparent form than just about anything I've seen in the last 15 years that I've been on this dais. The Commission is the ultimate responsible, accountable entity, period. That's the way it goes. There are a lot of points in this issue where the people think that they know as much as an attorney would on this issue. There are a lot of those points. But the reality of it is that, you know, I actually disagree with that. I believe that overriding the city attorney's authority is undermining his authority. The firm who represented the bar pilots, by the way, that one's been raised a couple of times here. The firm that represented the bar pilots, they represented the bar pilots against the cruise ship industry. So, you know, and we talk about these other firms that were turned down because of one side or the other, of their possibly being biased. Now we've got one that is good because they're biased, but they're on your side. You know, no, 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 it doesn't work that way, guys. If we want somebody that's going to play it down the middle, that's what we need to look for.
I've got just a couple of comments on that, particularly those comments, Commissioner Lopez, because we need to go right back, and we need to ask ourselves what we committed to the public during our cruise ship meeting. And we asked two things. We asked the first thing foremost was we hire an outside counsel that is going to represent the will of the people. And Margaret, this isn't a few loud voices, this is the majority of our voters that came out and said this. All seven of us sat up here and said, first and foremost, we want to represent the will of the people. Now, who best can represent the will of the people that took this organization, that got out this percentage of the vote, and worked with them for the past year? I mean, is there a law firm out there that understands the breadth of this issue and the facts, and have already done the heavy lifting and the work? Are we ever going to find anybody like that? The second thing that we ask for is to craft a defensible ordinance, which we all know we need. What better combination can we have than an organization that's a specialist in these three referendum, and Sean Smith, who has defended the city of Key West for 15 years? What a better combination do we have? And yet we continue to drag our feet. Commissioner Hoover, I agree wholeheartedly. You know, Joe Jacko needs to be vetted exactly the same as we would vet anybody. I mean, we shouldn't take any special steps here, but we are a year ahead of the game by going with a firm who understands the issue, the number of people who supported this issue, and the intricacies of this litigation. So I see it as the best of both worlds. Should we certainly vet this Mr. Jacko, and should he maybe appear in front of us so that everybody gets to see him? Absolutely. And I don't believe that this is usurping the city attorney's authority whatsoever. In fact, we recommend it that he get some help on this intricate issue. We're the ones that authorize that. But you have somebody sitting in front of you that, yes, should be fully vetted, but yes, has a year's worth of experience on this very issue that we are trying to address. We said on August 3, we have a resolution in front of us. You know, we're now five weeks down the road. We have nothing. Cruise ships are out there, we're being contacted by people, we're in limbo, and we need to make a decision. First and foremost, we need to support the three referenda. Second of all, we need to support and defend a legally defensible ordinance. And I would certainly agree that we need to have Mr. Jacko in front of us. If anybody else should come up in the interim, you know, that has those credentials and has that breadth of knowledge, you know, take a look at them. But we do need to move forward. We said that we were going to move forward in a very expedient manner. So those are my comments.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Commissioner Dabell, and then Commissioner Weakley.
You know, in listening to everybody, and, you know, I spoke with Sean earlier today, the, you know, the issue for me is, we received a lot of emails asking us to basically have our Commission vet whoever the applicant's going to be, not to go along with this proposal. And I kind of, you know, I do agree with that in the sense that this is a different issue. This is a bigger issue for the city of Key West, and I think it's important for the Commission to have its role in selecting its attorney on this issue. At the same time, as an attorney, I'm conflicted in the sense that who would want this? I'm serious. Any firm or any attorney that has a good practice, has an active practice, to subject themselves to come before this Commission, or to subject themselves to stand up here and to take questions from either side, from the community or from us, I don't know if anybody would really want to have to go through that. They'll just go on to the next client where they don't need to sit here and go through all of that. So I was prepared today to, you know, after Commissioner Kaufman made his motion, to go ahead and direct the city attorney to, you know, to move forward with speaking with Mr. Jacko, and maybe bringing that back to us, and seeing if, you know, if that's something that we can go forward with, or if someone else, you know, presents himself to the city attorney, then, you know, he could bring those candidates to us. But my concern is, we're not going to have people standing in front of us dancing for us to, you know, for us to, and if they are, we don't want that guy. I mean, that's not the attorney you want to hire. So I think you want, you know, someone that's, and I don't know Mr. Jacko, but it seems to me that everything that he's done so far, and everything that, he qualified for this. So I just would like to further direct the city attorney to go into that aspect and talk to Mr. Jacko, and see if it'd be something that he does have a conflict or doesn't have a conflict, if he can bring that back to us. That's what I'd like to do. I don't think I could support the ordinance or the resolution, so just for that, because I'd like to see it come back to us. And I realize this isn't a normal procedure, where there's a slip and fall, or another thing that the city attorney goes and hires, you know, an attorney for us. But so this is a little different. And not that, you know, I have complete faith in Sean, and Sean even said that this was important and wanted it to come before the Commission. So he's aware of that. So that's my opinion.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. First of all, I generally don't agree with Margaret Romero, but in this case, I have to with her remarks that she made about the city attorney. He's got a lot of integrity, and I've been working closely with him, and I know the number of firms that he's contacted about representation in some of the hoops that he's tried to jump through with them. I also want to say is that I really don't have an objection with this particular person. I just don't believe he's been vetted entirely, and that's the direction that I would like to give the city attorney as well, to vet him entirely, find out if he does have any conflicts. He may have a conflict that we're all unaware of, or his firm does. And then we need to go forward with it. You know, we gave direction back at that meeting we had a number of months ago to Sean, in fact, to go out and find an attorney, let the attorney draft the ordinance, because he was the one that was going to have to defend it. I still feel that way.
I still feel that way. And we do need to have public input. We need to have public input on whatever the firm that ends up taking on this responsibility drafts. We have an opportunity to question them, to question the attorney. The attorney's not here today that we could ask questions to. That's the other issue that I have. I was under the impression he was going to be here. So with that, I would agree with one of my other commissioners, fellow commissioners, say, and given Shawn direction to further vet this particular attorney and come back with us. And, you know, this is the second time this has been on the agenda. He had somebody else that he wanted to bring forward. So this, what I'm hearing, all the emails I'm getting about, it should be an open process. I think Shawn's been open with it. He's had two resolutions on that he was going to hire a firm, but then he found out there were conflicts, and it was too late for him to take it off the agenda. So he said withdraw it at the meeting. But let's give Shawn the, yes, that's the truth. And give Shawn the opportunity to vet Mr. Jaco and to come back at the next meeting with a recommendation.
Can we hear from the attorney?
I'd like to find out, actually, if Mr. Jaco could be here in public. I mean, along with the full vetting, to have a chance to really have all seven of us have a chance to talk to him and ask some questions. But I certainly think in between now and our next meeting would be adequate time to fully vet for conflicts of interest in that timeframe.
Can I, I mean, I know I want it to be public, and I think that's an opportunity, but I think for our sake, it's also maybe important to speak individually with Mr. Jaco, if we can have his information so that we can individually speak with him and, or whoever, you know, it may be. But I just want to take the attorney's side for a minute, and having to stand in front of, you know, a public forum and having to perform for the job, and certainly, you know, it pays, it's a paying job, but you don't have to subject, if you do have a good firm, and you don't have to subject yourself to that so often. So I'm just a little concerned with that. I know we did have a list of questions that were presented at one time to another firm, and I think all those are important questions to ask, but it's something that maybe we can ask individually, and then we could also have the public forum and ask, you know, by that time, we would have determined ourselves.
Madam Mayor. Can we hear from the attorney?
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Oh, did you want to say something, Shawn?
Yeah, I would like to. There has been a great deal of misunderstanding and misinformation on this specific topic. I have the right, under your Code of Ordinances, to hire an attorney. I have not done that. I have brought attorneys to you, first the rating firm, and they did not have a conflict. They represented the Biscayne Harbor Pilots Association in a rate challenge on a couple of occasions. They didn't have a challenge, but they would not represent this commission after what was done to them. Then I talked to Sam Goran, I talked to Sam Goran's partners. The issue on your agenda was to hire that firm. As I told you on September 3rd, there was no telling whether they could represent you or not. So I brought forth a generic resolution. There has never been an intent, despite the emails you have received, despite the calls to send you emails, there has never been an intention on this matter to hire anybody that you don't want. In fact, the very first time I talked to this commission, I said to you, if you want to hire anyone, bring them forward. So I have direction tonight to go out to this attorney. And I talked to Joe Jaco on at least two occasions, including yesterday afternoon, when he said to me, I'm not coming down, no way. I said, I personally invited him to come down. I said, please, the commission wants to hear from you, no doubt. And that's what I'm hearing tonight. It does not matter who you hire, I am going to work with them. As Commissioner Weekly says, as former Commissioner Romero says, I take my integrity seriously. I have been vilified throughout this process because they don't like me. I don't care. I really do not care. My job is to represent you, nobody else but you, the city commission. If you tell me to do something and it's legal, I will do it. I will certainly go out and call Mr. Jaco tomorrow and go through this. Yesterday afternoon, he said to me, I have to do a conflict check, just like Jimmy said. He's going to do that, just like the other firms did. I'm going to do that, just like I did with the other firms, to get somebody to represent you.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Yeah, so I agree with everything Shawn said. He's done a great job on this, and it's not easy. And there's a lot of public pressure, and there's a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding. That all being said, we had a workshop two months ago, and we haven't made any progress on this, and I think Commissioner Davila mentioned this too. I do, this is the kind of work I do, and I just don't think I would want to jump in on something like this. I have enough work to do, and I can make a living, and I don't have to bother with this controversial, you know, stuff in the media and in meetings, and what do I need this for? So I think we should listen to Commissioner Davila to some extent. I think we can have a public meeting, but let's be reasonable and careful with questions because we're looking at, you know, beginning a relationship, you know? We're not looking at ending a relationship. So we got to be careful, you know, how you enter into that professional relationship with a professional. So anyway, I think there's also some misunderstanding about conflict checks and vetting. That's the ethical duty of the lawyer. They have to do that, and that will be done. For us to say that we are going to give direction to the attorney to do additional vetting, and that's just part of the process of negotiating a contract. We're either interested in Mr. Jaco or we're not. And if we are, then we approve a resolution telling the attorney that we're interested in Mr. Jaco and move forward. That's how I look at it. And so, because otherwise, we're just kicking the can down to October 4th. Because if he has a conflict, then we will stop right there, we won't have a resolution of approving a retainer agreement. If we do, if he doesn't have a conflict, then we move forward. So I don't know why there's that, we're making this intermediary step. I don't understand that. But, you know, whatever the will of the commission is, obviously. I want to say also that, you know, this is an unusual process, but remember, there are no other firms in the queue, and there's unlikely to be other firms. Now, there might be, but as qualified as this person, we have a cell phone number. I called him, he answers his phone, and all of us can do that between now and October 4th. I don't see why not. So anyway, I just think we need to move forward with this motion. My motion is modifying the resolution, which is giving that direction to the city attorney to begin the process of negotiating a contract to hire Mr. Jaco for the purpose of drafting the ordinance, as we're talking about, and being prepared to defend it if there's a challenge. So I hope there's a second. If there isn't, then I think we need to move on.
All right. We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Well, I guess my thing was giving direction, but it's the same purpose as the resolution. My concern was with the information that we received from all the emails, that everyone didn't want this resolution to take forward. But since you're modifying it to include Mr. Jaco, I could support that. I'll second that.
All right. Commissioner Hoover?
Yes, so if we're to use this now with Commissioner Kaufman sponsoring, do we still not have to go through the process that we've said, and is that actually included in here, that we're still going to have to? I want to make sure that we're going to do the exact same things that we've been doing. That's my concern.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I think Shawn knows what to do. That's it. I mean, I think it's as simple as that. He knows how to hire attorneys. He's done that many, many times, and he will coordinate with Mr. Jaco to determine that they do their conflict check. And Shawn will do what he has to do. I mean, that's, I think, what we're talking about. Is it up to us to write questions to determine if there are? I think that that can be read in a way that we don't want it to be read, that we're going to be micromanagers, that we're going to be maybe problematic clients. We have to be, we want to forge a good relationship from the beginning with a professional who's going to be representing us. That's what I think. So I hope that answers the question. Maybe Shawn can be more, if he needs more specific, you know, direction on that, but I think he knows what to do.
No, I certainly do. My question is, do you want to see and approve the representation agreement?
I'm open to that.
Sean, repeat what you said. I didn't hear you.
Do you want to approve the representation agreement? The final document that hires the individual?
Yes. That way, everybody can see it. It's open to the public, they can comment on it.
It's a good idea. We can make up part of the motion. Sorry to interrupt. We can make up part of the motion.
And I think that's, you know, I think he's getting the direction here. I don't know if we need this resolution, though.
Well, no, there's a motion and a second on the table, and Commissioner Kaufman was just saying that he would modify his motion to include...
To include bringing back the retainer agreement for approval by the commission.
And do you agree with that, Commissioner Davila?
Commissioner Davila? Yes, that's why, initially, that's why I didn't want to approve the actual resolution, but I think coming back to us would certainly be something that I can agree with.
One other thing, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Weekly?
So in your vetting and Mr. Jaco's review of his firm to see if there's any conflict, I think we need to also, and I've mentioned this to you before, is to check with the Florida League of Cities in case this doesn't happen because of any, you know, foreseeable, unforeseeable circumstance that may arise. So we could at least start getting some other names from other firms that may be recommended by the Florida League of Cities.
Carrie, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Davila?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoover?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Weekly?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes, motion passes.
And, Mayor Commissioners, you have the cell number I just sent you of Mr. Jaco in case any of you want to call him directly.
Thanks, Shawn.
Okay, thank you.